Wow.
That's good.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the Tuesday, May 27th, meeting of the Milton Select Board. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:01, and please join me and Stan, if you are able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is public comment. I think I saw Mr. Dougherty who had signed in, so I'll call on you first. I do see some hands up on, or at least one hand up online, so we'll alternate.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Per Select Board rules and following state law, we have 21 minutes total allotted for citizen speak. Each speaker is asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. I will keep track of the three-minute mark. Mr. Milano will keep track of the overall 21 minutes. I'll give you a brief verbal warning when you hit two minutes and 30 seconds. And I should add, too, just before we get started, Mr. Daley will be joining us. He's just, he's doing an award ceremony at the high school, so he'll be a little bit late. So with that, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Thomas Dougherty, Precinct 3. Under the MBTA Communities Act and the regulations published on March 28, 2025, Milton can choose to adopt a multifamily zoning ordinance as an adjacent community with 10% or more of the total housing units capacity eligible for multifamily use. Milton is being penalized by the HLC, as we all know, withholding state funding. HLC's continued funding penalty gives Milton so-called legal standing to file a court action seeking a ruling that HLC is wrong because Milton has a choice. What is that choice? Milton can seek a court ruling that both the statute and HLC's own final regulations published March 28th give Milton, not the HLC, the choice to decide whether A, HLC, whether to accept HLC's classification, or whether to have the court order that because Milton is located within a half-mile of commuter rail stations, was less than 100 acres of developable land in that area, therefore Milton is an adjacent community and can develop a multifamily zoning plan that provides the 10% multifamily zoning capacity located across the town, not just within a half-mile of commuter rail stations as HLC's regulations published in March 28th themselves explicitly state. Now, at last week's Select Board meeting, there was a discussion of whether, if Milton accepts 25% mandate, Milton could in the future reject or try to limit monthly family zoning plans. That would be very difficult because, as of right, zoning in Massachusetts and in other states like California, Oregon, Connecticut, and others, that, that gives the state government in each case, those states, the full discretion to reject any proposed limitation, not, not the town the right, but the builders themselves do have the right to challenge any such limitation proposed by the town because the, because the state decides it. Furthermore, the state can then withhold state fundings. Does that sound familiar? Just as they do now, when a town does not follow the state's ruling, if the town interferes with or tries to reject the, the approval that the, that the, that the HLC in this case did.
Thirty-six.
So I would just point out that as to what, what can happen, the multifamily zoning, up to 25%, 240, 61 total units, with 50% of that within a half-mile of the trolley stops and 50% elsewhere, that's what the, that's, that's what would happen without regard in the future to exactly how that would come, come down, and there'd be no right by the town to second-guess that. Thank you.
Thank you. Exactly three minutes. Again, you've got it timed out very well, sir. We'll move online to Deborah Felton. Has her hand raised?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Deborah Felton, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. I've been a resident of the town for 39 years. I think I've been watching Select Board meetings for 39 years. I've never seen any of these personal attacks like I saw last week, but I want to commend the Select Board on your leadership, and now is the time to move forward on complying with the MBTA community law. As elected members of the Planning Board and the Select Board stated at the joint meeting, it is time to come together as a town. Stop the personal attacks on elected members who have volunteered their time to work toward making our community better. We have spent enough money on litigation and has lost enough money on state grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else signed in? Did you sign it, Mr. Cristo?
Yes.
So I'm just going to assume that you're, if there's anybody else after you on the list, let me know, but we'll assume that you're
It's like, it's just us two.
Okay.
Hi, Mark Cristo, 17 Waldorf Road. I'd like to talk tonight about endorsing a 10% zoning plan. It's the only legitimate option for Milton. Milton has not lost its case in court regarding its classification. The case brought before the SJC had nothing to do with correcting an unjust punitive, sloppily assigned faulty rapid transit classification. A court challenge reclassification of the Matapan Trolley is most credible, given HLC's inability or unwillingness to address the ambiguous classification. The SJC declared that HLC improperly promulgated their regulations. That's telling. Would one expect HLC to make a self-admission of their failings either then or now? The Matapan Trolley is not rapid transit. HLC has failed to recognize the operational inferiority of the Matapan Trolley. The trolley's a small, single-vessel-only with limited carrying capacity with no ability to transport one passenger downtown. HLC failed to recognize Ashmont is the terminal endpoint of rapid transit. That is indisputable. The trolley sits entirely beyond that terminus, only feeding into it, just like a bus. Rapid transit provides generous carrying capacity over long distances directly to downtown for all passengers. HLC has ignored the MBTA Board of Directors' abandonment of their plan to convert the trolley to rapid transit. The plan's detail a significant reduction in number of transit nodes, from seven trolley stops to just two rapid transit stations. That's a byproduct of rapid transit conversion. Those MBTA plans are critically important and cannot be ignored. The developable station area for two rapid transit stations, one at Milton, one at Matapan, is numerically less than the stale overstated 404 acres presented by HLC. In truth, the reduction in DSA, a reconfiguration for the transit area, and reassessment for zoning reallocation elsewhere confirm that a compliant plan cannot be based on HLC's stale data. HLC's classification downgrades and reductions in zoning requirements benefited 90 municipalities. That is a significant advantage for more than half of the 177 affected communities. What fairness see you knowing that Milton's unjust and punitive classification remains unresolved? The Select Board should disqualify any 25% compliant plan based upon stale data associated with the ambiguous classification assigned Milton by HLC. Your active participation in working with Milton's full body of elected officials towards arbitration and litigation regarding our ambiguous classification will bring clarity and resolution. The demand on Milton requires us all to come together on this. Thank you. Nice to talk a little slower. I would like to, just if I could, drop off a couple listings. I've done the listing of the downgrades of the, of primarily
Of course.
Downgrades for 90 communities for you to look at.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not having any other names on the paper and not seeing any hands raised online, I will declare an end to the public comment. Moving on to item number four, we have
Somebody, yeah? Somebody had suggested maybe we respond to a public comment now because there are a lot of issues on this list that relate to them.
Well, I'm just, I think for, in turn, we've got a whole MBTA discussion
We can do it then.
That's coming up, so I think we can, which will be pretty quick. It's
What numbers that, Mr. Chair? Just remind me.
We've got item six, and item, item five is special town meeting, item six is MBTA Communities Act. I was going to suggest that we move our
Twenty-two.
Pride Month proclamation
Okay.
Up to after Motorcycle Awareness
Okay.
Because I know we have, I think we have folks for both of these. So Motorcycle Awareness Month proclamation. We have someone in the, the crowd that wishes to speak to it?
You can speak to it.
Please come up to the desk and identify yourself. I saw the motorcycles are everywhere bumper sticker and made a radical, you know, judgment that it might be you, but
Yeah, true. Great Detunction, Sanctuary Lane, Precinct 6. So I ride, I live in the town. My family's been here since 1949. I've spent half my cumulative years here. My sisters, my mother have lived here all that time. May is National Motorcycle Awareness Month, and many of us have sought professional training and track time to improve our skills, but many riders have not. So by bringing, you know, heightened awareness to motorcycle safety at the town level and at the state level perhaps, we can encourage more people to seek professional training and ride more safely and get licensed. Anyone can walk into a Massachusetts motorcycle dealer and purchase a 225-horsepower motorcycle and walk out with a permit. They may never have ridden before. So I did the inverse. My motorcycle has unfortunately less, so its power. So I'm hoping this proclamation will just bring some more light on to the need for professional training and safety on the road for both motorcyclists and other occupants of the road.
Thank you, sir. Well, we're very pleased to read. I have, Ms. Hegarty has the proclamation. Did you wish to add anything else?
No, thank you. I, I appreciate your
You're very welcome.
Support. Yeah, thanks.
All right, here we go. A proclamation, whereas according to the Motorcycle Industry Council, motorcycling is a great tradition enjoyed by an estimated 30 million individuals annually in the United States, representing 9% of the population, and whereas motorcycles are fuel-efficient and decrease congestion while having little impact on the transportation infrastructure, and whereas motorcycle fatalities occur more frequently than passenger-vehicle fatalities, and whereas the motorcycle community is committed to decreasing motorcycle crashes through training and safety education, personal responsibility, and increased public awareness, and whereas motorcycle awareness is beneficial to all road users and will help decrease motorcycle crashes, and whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration promotes Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month to encourage riders to be properly licensed, receive training, and wear personal protective equipment, and to remind all riders and motorists to share the road. Now, therefore, we, the Milton Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month in Milton, given this day, Tuesday, May 27, 2025, signed by the Chair on behalf of the Select Board, Benjamin Diesel.
That's right.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair. She makes that as a motion. Is that for a motion? Are you going to make
Is it a motion?
What says here, motion to approve proclamation declaring, so
I'll take that as a motion, and I'll take that as a second.
You all right? Okay.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great. Well, here's, so that's a copy for the gentleman that you have, and you've got that nice traveling envelope with it.
Lovely.
And thank you for raising this up to our attention, and I hope that the weekends start to clear out a little bit so you can get some riding time in
Yeah, thank you.
Because it's certainly not been a motorcycle-friendly May so far.
I don't know how far
Yeah, thank you all.
You're very welcome.
Attached to a wire.
It's free.
Thank you. Congrats.
Yeah. It didn't cost anything.
So without objection, then I'm going to move Pride Month proclamation up to our next item, and I believe we have a few folks, two folks that are going to be here, just one folk? Any folks?
I think that's going to be me.
All right.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you so much. Okay. So I just wanted to offer a little comment, and first to offer my sincere thanks to every member of the Select Board on behalf of the Milton Pride Committee. And as you know, across the country, both at the state and the federal level, the LGBTQ+ community is under attack. For LGBTQ+ people, these attacks aren't just a political debate. They have very real implications for our lives, for our safety, for our health, for our well-being, for how we exist in our workplaces, and our ability to live to our full potential. This evening with this proclamation, this Milton Select Board sends a strong and clear message that Milton values and supports its LGBTQ+ community members. We choose to celebrate Pride in the month of June as a way to commemorate our history and the sacrifices of those who have come before us. We honor the courage of those who stood up against police violence in the Stonewall riots back in 1969, led by transgender women of color and homeless youth, and joined by their gay, lesbian, bisexual, although they may not, they may or may not have used those terms, colleagues, and fought for six days, six days in 1969. It takes courage now to stand up. Imagine the courage it took then, and part of what we're doing every June is commemorating that. Pride is also a celebration, so as we continue this tradition of calling for equality, it's also a time to be joyful, to celebrate the wonderful contributions of LGBTQ+ people, and to live openly with freedom and dignity, which are the exact things that those early protesters at Stonewall were fighting for. Pride is a time to connect with each other, to feel the support of allies, to rededicate ourselves to the continued fight for justice, and to celebrate our community, and that's why it's so important that we do it right here in Milton. It sends a strong message to all of us and to our youth that you do not have to leave home to experience the support of community, which so many, particularly in previous generations, had to do. They had to be willing to give all of that up. This year, the theme for Milton Pride is Pride Starts With Us, and there is no better way to send that message than a proclamation from the Select Board. And with that in mind, I'd like to personally invite each of you, each member of our Select Board, all of you watching, to join us on June 7th. This year, we're moving Pride to the gazebo right in front of Town Hall, so we have a more visible location. It will be a bigger event. We will start with a traditional car parade, which is now in its sixth year. We invite you to decorate your car and join the car parade. We have a new and longer route this year. There will be live music and speakers starting at 1:00 p.m. There will be an ice cream truck. There will be children's activities. There will be all kinds of fun, all kinds of representation from organizations, from the library, from the Milton Interfaith Coalition, and we hope to see you there. Let your LGBTQ neighbors know that you value them. Send a strong message to LGBTQ+ youth that Milton is invested in their success and happiness, and that they are valued here, and that they are safe with you. You can visit our website for more info. Now I feel like an infomercial, but please visit our website. It's brandy-new. We are in need of more sponsors, more volunteers for the day, and again, everyone is invited to participate in Pride, and it does send a really, really strong message. Many of us were not even born in 1969, and yet we continue this tradition, and we have expanded it in Milton, and so we thank you so much for this proclamation, and we hope to see each and every one of you there on June 7th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, I can turn to you to, is this one a motion as well?
It is. So if he makes it a motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Proclamation, whereas the town of Milton is a friendly and welcoming community that celebrates and promotes diversity and inclusion, and whereas the town of Milton recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the town of Milton recognizes that our nation was founded upon the principles that all people are created equal and that each person has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas the town of Milton is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its residents and preventing discrimination and mistreatment based on sexual orientation or gender identity, and whereas the town of Milton is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vital, vibrant character of our town, and whereas the town of Milton recognizes the importance and contributions of members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning LBDQ, TQ community. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board, and on behalf of the town of Milton, hereby proclaim and recognize the month of June as Lesbian, Gay, Bi, Sexual, Transgender, Queer, and Questioning LGBTQ Pride Month, and we urge all residents to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty, given this day, Tuesday, May 27, 2025, signed by the Chair on behalf of the Select Board, Benjamin Diesel.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion before we vote? I just want to second what you said about the attacks on LGBTQ folks around the country. It's getting worse, and I think more than ever, it's important for us to, to have proclamations in days like this, to make everyone feel safe. So, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, you want to go to 17 as well? It's on the same
Oh, we have one more, we have another proclamation?
Oh, we have another? All right, okay.
Oh, yes, the use of Manning Park Pride Flag Decorative Light Installation.
Same topic, you understand?
Sure. Why don't we do that, too? Thank you, Mr. Wells, that's a good suggestion. Mr. Milano, do you want to?
Sure. So Marina Fernandez, DPW Director, has been in touch with folks in the Pride Committee who had requested a way to have an installation down at Manning Park, and they've worked through different options and talked about donating decorative lights that could be installed and in place at the park, more than just through the month of June, but also for the month of June, to hang pride flags that would be strung alongside the ornamental lights. So two donations to the town, the first being the pride flags and the second being the lights, the lights we would be able to use permanently through the summer and other times of the year as needed, and we'll bring some additional lighting and festive atmosphere to the park.
Well, I think that's great, and, and the pride flags would just be for the month of June
Correct.
So then, but the lights for the whole summer. It looks really nice with the lights up. I do, I do like it.
I'll make the motion to approve the use of Manning Park Pride Month Flag Installation for the month of June decorative
Second.
And then to continue the decorative lights through the summer. Is that all right? That, that'll, okay. Through the summer?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Okay, now I'll be quiet.
And now, we will go back in time to item number five, Discussion Update Special Town Meeting, June 16, 2025.
Do you see another proclamation?
Do we have another? No, that one's not a proclamation.
No, no, no.
Misspoke.
I only assigned two, so
That's correct.
I'm, I'm ready to proclaim many things. Mr. Milano, how are we on the, on our special town meeting?
I'll say, I distributed a draft of the warrant in the packets. We've had a few different iterations that we've, we've caught typos and other corrections throughout the day. At this time, the same articles that we discussed at our prior meeting remain on the warrant, Reserve Fund appropriation, acceptance of property tax exemption, cost of living adjustments, four zoning articles, the floodplain one, the mixed-use one for East Milton, the 10% adjacent community plan submitted by the Planning Board, and then the citizens petition. So those are the six articles in that order. I would just ask that the Select Board approve the warrant this evening, otherwise I don't have any updates or changes for the board at this time.
And the timing for the printer and everyone?
It's been sent. We're expecting a final proof tomorrow. It should be printed and delivered to the post office this week, and will be posted in accordance with the notification required.
You want a motion?
I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, approve the warrant as printed. Print it.
Seconded by Ms. Hegarty. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mark your calendars, June 16th. It's only six items, so it should be a one day, right? It's only six items, so it should be a one day, right?
Will.
Will. Will. So then, item six, we have MBTA Communities Act Status and Next Step Discussion Update Approval. And I will turn, I don't know if there's anything formally from you, Mr. Milano, on this?
No, not at this time. I don't have any, nothing new to report from myself.
Okay. Well, we can use this time to both address citizen questions and other thoughts that we might have. Just let, let's try to keep this, well, we'll always keep it cordial here, but we'll keep it cordial and, and at the higher level.
Are you asking move 22 up? Or whatever, we're going to move public comment response up? Is that what you're?
Well, Mr. Cohen had suggested that we could move it up, but I, you know, much as we did with, when we had our joint meeting with the Planning Board, I think a lot of the comments that were made during, during citizen speak will probably come up here as well. So if we don't get to anything and somebody wants to respond to citizen speak, we'll still have that option. So, Mr. Cohen?
I, you know, we've, we've had a lot of discussion even just now about coming together and sanity and rational, and it just seems to me, and again, I'm new to all this, but it seems to me that the declaratory judgment is a perfect opportunity for us to be able to come together. Because we can leave it to the court to decide which route we take. If I'm understanding this correctly, that's what this would be, is to leave it to the court to decide which route we take. And, you know, I think if we do agree to go that way, we should agree to abide by whatever that is. I, I just, I, I think it's, I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to come together. We leave it to the courts to decide. That's my response to that.
Okay. Other thoughts? Mr. Wells?
I'll go last.
I might reserve the chair's right to go last.
Oh, no, you go. No, 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 but.
Any, any thoughts or comments on where we are?
So on my end, I think a lot of interesting ideas have been surfaced and proposed, and one of the, the main considerations that I have are the financial, the financial implications of any of these possible approaches or scenario on the town. And I think that we should get some clarification and a legal opinion from our own town council to, to put forward some analysis on different opportunities for various scenarios and examine what we think would be the best, best cost, best value for the town.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I missed the majority of the citizen speaks.
Well, if there's anything else on the MBTA.
But I, I will say, I did ask for the town council's review and opinion on what was sent to us today, so I'll reserve judgment until we have that opinion. What I will add is that what I hope for, or what I will push for, is that regardless of where we land, that we push for more coordination through all of our boards on the future of the town and the impacts of every decision that we make. I think whether rapid transit, or adjacent, or whatever place we end, once we finally decide that we are settled, I think the coordination is the piece and the execution is what is more, more important than our classification.
I'm ready. Thank you. So I've had the benefit to have been here historically for now for nine years. And when I first joined this board, we were in a similar situation with 7-Eleven Randolph Avenue. It was a Mouse of 40B project, and we wound up seeking outside council and spending, I believe significantly more than was spent on, on, on the MBTA project. But one of the things that happened in that case was, when I first arrived here, Kathleen O'Donnell, much similar to how Attorney Dougherty has done, and through this MBTA project, was providing significant advice pro bono to the town and to town council, was actually based on her suggestions that we actually went outside of Murphy, as she told me, only for the first time, and we started independent counsel on that case. We brought in, was it Henry Wayne Barnes, right, Henry Wayne Barnes, to represent the town because of their specialty in that kind of 40B work. In this case, the second thing is that Attorney Dougherty has provided, I can't even tell, and I, this is the thing I know the least about on this board, I've never been on the committee, is on FAA and our airplane, you know, our plane, the issues we've had with airplane noise, which continue to plague, as you heard yesterday when we were sitting at the cemetery, continue to plague this town on a daily basis, particularly in the warmer weather. Attorney Dougherty provided immense guidance, not just to town council, but to this board, past boards, to our congressional delegation, I believe he still assists Congressman Lynch. In the MBTA communities, I don't even know how many conversations that he had where he, his advice was sought, not just by town council, but by our special counsel who represented us before the SJC. He has a very proven track record, and to be honest, for someone I never knew before I came into this office, he's been spot on in everything he suggested to us. So to me, any guidance, help, or effort that town council can seek from him, I'm very much in favor of hearing, because as, as you said, Mr. Cohen, is, I mean, you guys just got here, and you land in it, it's like you parachuted into a hot zone, and you're in it, and it's like, it's where we are. It's the toughest thing I've ever had to deal with on my time here. And that's kind of where I am on it. I'd, I'd like to see, I, I would hope that maybe you could arrange for Peter Mello and Attorney Dougherty to talk, and then report back to us sooner versus later, like, I don't want to wait the two weeks, if that's possible, Mr. Chair, if we could just. I'm not surprised with his analysis. I've heard it before. I've heard it from my colleagues in Beacon Hill, I've heard it from other attorneys. I'm, I'm not surprised by it, so. And to his credit, and everything that he said would happen in the SJC, including that it would go to the SJC, happened. So I'm very grateful for his time and effort. This is not something an attorney of his background and experience has to commit himself to, and I'm very grateful that, once again, he's committed so many hours to this town and so many issues I can't even count, so. Thank you, thank you, Tom, for that, as always. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that comment.
You're welcome.
Get some air on that on this.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna deviate from the script a little bit, if I can, because I think so much of this has been 10% versus 25%, and I feel like we're really losing the forest for the trees. And, you know, I, in terms of Mr. Dougherty's analysis, I, I know that he has provided analysis also to the Select Board prior to the, you know, prior to the court case being filed. At the time, we, I, I believe that our, our town council accurately predicted that if we followed that advice, we would go to the SJC and lose, and that is what happened. So if we want to take credit for that, that's fine. But for me, you know, I, I'm, I'm always happy to have a volunteer citizen step in. I, I, you know, I, I start to worry when that one citizen gets to really kind of pontificate and become almost like a shadow town council. I think that becomes problematic in ways that open government would obviously demand it to be. But I, like I said, I want to, I want to deviate from, and it's not an attack on Mr. Dougherty, and it's not an attack on the Planning Board, I just think that it's not the best practice for a government to, to run like that. But really, what, what I, what I've seen, again, with this debate is just a slew of miss and disinformation about what a 25% plan would mean for the town, and it's just, it's disappointing. If we are compliant with the law, which I think seems like a very low bar for us to be clearing as, as a municipal government, we will have a return of state funding. We're going to be talking later today about some state funding that we are now eligible to do for traffic mediation in East Milton, that is a significant opportunity, that we're only eligible because now, for a brief window of time at least, we are once again compliant. We've also just faced the biggest override in our town's history. And despite the rhetoric that more development means less revenue, the opposite has proven true time and time again. It's just science and economics. If, if density led to less revenue, then New York City would be vacant, and, you know, I'm not even sure where would be, where, where, where money would go. But really, it's about freedom for our residents, too. At a time where we're facing ICE agents snatching people off of the street, at a time where we're facing cuts to hospitals and universities that employ our citizens, the idea that the MBTA communities is the biggest hurdle that we're going to face, to me, is not true. I think we just have a lot bigger fish to fry, and that is why I'm really concerned that if we continue this divisive, I'm a 10%, you're 25%, I'm here, you're there, we've got really significantly bigger problems to face as a town. If we adopted a 25%, it would just give a few more residents in town the ability to do with what they want with their homes, without having to go, jump through too many hoops. They would still have to go to the Planning Board, things would still have to be approved, infrastructure improvements would still have to be paid for by whomever is developing. Chart after chart shows that this is a net surplus for our town in terms of services. People like to talk about the schools. We have one kid, we had one kid, I don't even know if they're still there anymore, at the entire 88 Worf Development. The idea that this is going to somehow flood our schools has been proven wrong again and again and again. We want housing diversity in this town. We want our elderly folks to be able to age in place. We want our kids to be able to come back from college and live in the towns that they grew up in. We want people to be able to have the freedom to, you know, to make a little extra revenue off of their home. A lot of people are land-rich and cash-poor in this town, and that's not going to change. If we keep fighting the state, if we keep denying people the opportunities that would be inherent in a 25% plan, we're going to continue to go down this path, which is financially unsustainable. This town, you cannot dip this town in amber and, and preserve it for 100 years, as much as you'd like to do that. This town has changed enormously over the last 15 years that I've been here, and over the last 50, 100, 200 years. Change is certain. It's the only thing that's certain in life is change. And the idea that we can somehow stand athwart history and command it to stop is just, it's false. It's false. It can't be done. We are in a housing crisis as a state. This offers us significant opportunities to get off of the path that we're on towards financial and political irrelevance, because we won't be able to pay our bills in a few years if we don't start having more commercial development and more denser housing. We just won't be able to do it. So for that, for all those reasons, I think a group of citizens have already put this in front. We're going to be discussing a 25% plan at the town meeting, we're required to by law. I will look forward to the discussion on, on the floor of town meeting. But I really want folks to start thinking about 25% as an anchor around our chain, and, and anchor around our neck, and rather as a rising tide that will lift all of the boats of Milton. Those are my admittedly more than two cents. And I welcome any further comments before we move. We're not.
I mean, it's, it is what it is. I had a wonderful conversation with a city planner from a compliance city not far from me, who knows intimately this town. Two of the things that they brought to point immediately were that, A, Milton is unique, that I keep forgetting about, that unlike the majority, I think 99% of the communities in the Commonwealth that used a 360-degree radius to put their housing, to put their, we are limited to 180 degrees because the other 180 degrees is in the city of Boston, which is exempt from MBTA communities. So as for the court, we can all go back and forth. I don't see it as a loss. I think that the court made a decision. I think that the legislature expected something different from what the government would enact for regulations, but that's what she chose to do. I do think Mr. Cohen is correct. I think the one way to stop the prolong, and I believe that's what Senator Driscoll was advocating for, was, is to perhaps get a declaratory, you know, go and get a declaratory judgment. I mean, it can't hurt us, it's not going to cost us any money. It's not going to cost, to Mrs. Hagerty's point, it's not going to lost, cost a lot of money to do it. Because either way, and I, I hear you, and I hear Mr. Zoll, but I can't believe I've been here this long, but since the first override in 1986, we've built over 800 units of housing in this town, not to mention how many new houses. We've built all new schools, we've added, I can't even tell you how many restaurants. A town that had no liquor licenses, East Milton Square and Central Avalo Mills are restaurant, restaurant destinations with more wanting to come all the time. And we, we just applied for five new liquor licenses, and as I call, I got a call from Consumer Affairs the other day, we started sitting and just partying, they'll be gone in, they're going to be gone in two years. That's how many commerce, you know, we're never going to have, and if, and if anyone's proposing, go back and look 15 years ago when they tried to bring a, a mall here on 28, it went down like fire. But, I mean, we're never going to have a social plaza, but we do, we have changed dramatically in offering amenities for this town to the level that we can. The one thing that has not changed in over 100 years, this is the population, as big as Curry's gotten, all of that, was still like 27, 28,000 people. It's, it's never changed. You go back to 19, early 1930s, it was 27, 28,000 people, so that potter hasn't changed. So I hear you, and I, I'm not going to disagree with the issues of the world, but a 25% plan in Milton can't solve all the issues of the world. That's, that's the one thing that we can't do, so. That's just, I, I kind of, I don't see a lot of cost in it. It seems that, and again, I, my whole fight in this, you've heard me from day one, my whole fight has been in fairness. And the state promised us a lot of things, it never came through with anything, and they still haven't come through with anything, so that's where I am on it.
I do, I do think the, the idea of having the court make a, make a judgment is, is definitely an interesting one, if it, if it takes some stuff off the table. But again, I also am concerned, you know, just about, about the cost right now, if, if that would, and I can't judge this myself, but what are the, what are the probabilities, and this is what Mr. Mello and his team could advise us on, what are the probabilities that that takes us down a certain legal rabbit hole, or, you know, gets us into just a lot of legal expenses? That, that would be, that would be my question about that. If it, if it solves some things, great, but at, at what cost? What, what cost is it worth to us to do that, especially when we just had a level service override? And we've got to be prudent with, with what we're spending money on.
Other thoughts?
And I, I really do think that, that, you know, our legal counsel needs to weigh in and, and give us a holistic picture of, of what, what our options are, and what do, what do each of those options mean?
Sure. You know, I, I just think, and I, you know, I, listen, I, I respect everybody who's involved. I understand that there's a lot of different opinions on this. You know, I, it's, it's, the idea that we should pass a 10% plan, get sued again by the state, go for declaratory judgment, hopefully win this time, and then be in good standing, to me, is just like, let's rinse and repeat our last mistake. And, excuse me if you will, Mr. Wells. It's, it's a mistake, and states, the, the courts have long deferred to state agencies when it comes to rules and regulations. They're not going to cut out an exception for Milton. The, you know, the, the 180-degree thing is something that has been addressed from day one. That's the reason why we have flexibility to move 50% of our housing in other places. And I think that, that what's happened with this new 25% plan is that, that has been moved so that it is not overly burdensome on East Milton. East Milton number of units has gone down dramatically, and really just taking advantage of the 40B that's being constructed. There's a lot more, there's a lot more, I think, fairness and equity, but ultimately, we, we cannot hold our breaths on this and continue to fight the state. If we're talking about millions of dollars in, you know, in potential state funding for schools, for roads, I don't know why we would jeopardize that for something which is not, by anybody's imagination, going to fundamentally change the face of town in the next five, 10 years. The things that have been. The things that have been changing the face of town have been the 40Bs, which have been going up because we have failed to build affordable housing over the last 40-some years. That's what's changing the face of the town. The, what we're talking about with the, with the denser housing, you know, the Elliott Street corridor, it's, it does not, the renderings that were produced for the 2023 town meeting were beautiful. It looked gorgeous. And when we go down, when, when you go down to Boston and you walk around Com Ave and you look around and you're like, boy, I'd love to live on Com Ave, that's all dense housing. It's, it's, you know, so we can have nice things. We don't have to go to the courts. We don't have to rely on a judge. And then what happens when that judge says no? I held my tongue for a year and a half as this town pursued what I thought was pointless litigation that we were going to lose and which we have lost and which we are now trying to get ourselves out of. And I'm now in a position where I don't have to hold my tongue anymore, as if people are going to be surprised that they think that I've ever, ever held my tongue. But I would say choosing the route of antagonism is not correct. And also assuming that there are going to be thousands of people who are again outraged over this when we have so many bigger problems that they would want to have another election. That is a choice that would be made by independent citizens. That's not something that we can control as a town. But people can choose whether or not they want to continue to fight this. And I, if you think that if the declaratory judgment goes against Milton and everybody's like, okay, great, we're 25%, I got a bridge to sell you. That's not going to happen. People will fight this tooth and nail until we finally get to a point where we're complying with the law. And I am, for one, tired of fighting this fight.
If I could add something just quickly, I think it says here, our current status and our next steps. I feel joining this board now and running to be on, on this board, we still feel very stuck. We do not have any clear way forward at any percentage or any designation. We have no guarantee that a town meeting, anything that we put in front of town meeting is going to be approved. Right? We are currently, again, everyone's backs are up. We're back to the argument. So we do not have a way forward either way. If we went with the declarative judgment, if we lost that, is that enough? Are we done? What is our, what is our timeline on that? Are we getting that response back in 30 days, 60, 90 days? Those are things I'd ask for Attorney Mello and Attorney Doherty as well, what our plan is. But if we are simply just finding another argument to have so that we never have to make a decision, then we sit in a place where we have no point. Right? Regardless of what our designation is, we have had over three years to come up with many different plans and paths for the town. We have provided the citizens with none of them. We have not spoken about how often we think things will be built, what we expect to be built at any level. We simply have frameworks. We have some ideas. We haven't had the time for public comment. Our process has been poor. And I think that is the place where I sit now and turning about what are we going to do, is we've all picked our team or people have assigned teams to different people, right? Regardless they know or not. They've assigned everyone their team. You 25, you're 10, you're wrapping this stuff. But we don't have anything in place for any of them. When we bring this to the citizens, they're going to have more questions. And we have not yet put that forward. We're not talking about economic development. We're not talking about our housing production. We're not talking about commercial. We don't have everything laid out for Milton's future. And I think that's what people are asking us to do besides all, instead of all of us, again, being back to the place of, let's go back to our teams again. Let's find another reason. I will say personally, because people have asked me this over the last three days, and I don't want to make all these stories anecdotal, folks, you gotta support the 10% or you gotta support the 25%. Well, if you show me the path that actually makes sense for us getting to adjacent or commuter rail or any of these other things, perhaps I would. I haven't seen that. And I'm going to speak for myself so that others don't speak for me. I haven't seen the path legally that I say, we can definitely do that. On this one, I've asked and requested official comment from our town council, because I think that's the process that we should go through. And if the board decides that we do want to do this judgment because the timeframe fits in with what we think can have us be successful, then perhaps we do go that way. But if we lose, I'll just ask folks who want this, is that it? Are we done at that point? Can we then get together and think about the steps forward? Or do we go back to another thing? Just want to ask you, what's the last thing that we have to do before we move forward? And I think that would, that would be my final comment. Chair Zoll, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Cohen, I think you wanted to say something.
Just that I, being in residential real estate all my life, it's going to be very lucrative to take a single family and make it into a three. And there will be a lot of those. And those will exacerbate our 40B situation. A lot of those. It's low-hanging fruit. It's really easy. There's no affordables in it. It's in and out. It's really easy. There's lots of them. There's lots available. I, I just can't in good conscience support moving forward with this because I think the impact, that's where we disagree. I think the impact on our town is huge, will be huge, and it'll be sooner rather than later, in my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Wells?
So just, and I agree with both Mr. Daley and Mr. Cohen, and I think I've been pretty clear where I'm at. But about, you weren't here yet, about six years ago, we became, it was through, we were doing, we had hired a company to study on where we could build a youth center in the town. And in the report, they made a comment, the consultant made a comment that they had found five acres on Brushell Road. And I'm like, five acres? What, five acres on Brushell? Right away, I wrote a note, I'm like, it's five acres on Brushell Road. So I made a note and I went back and I was unaware of Article 97 land. It was parkland. Even before I was born, it was basketball courts. It, it runs along from not far from where the DCR substation is. It runs right down Brushell Road to, to its Brushell Road along the way. Within about a month, we convened a huge group. Planning Board, Work Inc., Mass Housing, HLC, every entity we could think of to do a walking tour. And for me, and I'm not an expert in this at all, but one of the things I knew, my father, we moved here, we lived on Beacon Street, by off Truman Highway. So, and I knew, there's no amenities there. There's nothing there. There's no, there's, I've known it my whole life. And I, in, like, I'm not a, but people like Cheryl and Allison Quinn was here then, and there were gentlemen, people from Work Inc., and there were so many different, I'm like, this could be unbelievable. This could be affordable. It could be mixed use, you know, some commercial on the first floor. DCR would take interest because of the butts that are parts of a river. Maybe make some recreational access. We put all kinds of work in it. When everyone left here Wednesday night, Mr. Geis and I stood outside and we talked for an hour on this project. Because I thought maybe those five acres were included in this new 25%. They're not. And this is part of the issue we have in this town. Because we don't have another five acres in Article 97 land to take Article 97 land, which is parkland, you have to swap in and give five acres of comparable land. There aren't five acres in this town to give, to use that. And like, and you can, am I correct? You knew it. I went, there aren't five acres in this entire town left that is not parkland to use to put something that would have been such a great amenity for this community there. So that's, I understood, this is difficult. To Mr. Daley's point, he's right. The reason you can't see the path, it's so hard. And I've seen so many good people on both sides trying to figure out ways. Because even the affordable aspect, MBTA communities is not affordable housing. It's not. We've approved 537 units of affordable housing since I got here. MBTA communities is not that. It's totally different. Totally different. And I just don't want to see another three months. I'm just, I'm tired of fighting. I'm not afraid to fight. But I, I'll say this to you, Mr. Zoll, and I, I take your passion. Sometimes you have to fight for what's right. There's a case ongoing in federal court right now. It was in federal court, and now it's before, I think, Board of Our Overseas. A Newton District Court Judge took an ICE detainee, ICE was trying to get in her courthouse, and slid that person out the back door to prevent them from being detained. I've spent my whole life in policing. I put handcuffs on more people than I can count, but I've also at times been when someone should have had handcuffs on, you find the compassion, humanity to find another route. I get, I understand why that judge did that. I understand why this governor and the governor before, who appointed her, support her in that. Is it a radical thing? Yes. Is this as radical as that? No. But I understand in every deep core of me and aspect why the words you talk about, you talk about, all of you talk about, make this such a difficult thing for this town. There is no easy answer. And all we need to be is to try and take everything we can, because as you heard me say last week, I can work with 15, if we can forget to 15. And, and I think that's more, that's, if we're adjacent, that's giving them 5% more than they'd get if we were just an adjacent community. But that's more than two cents. Thank you.
We've all got two bets this time. Any other comments on this one? Mr. Milano?
I just seek some clear direction. So it sounds like there was a consensus to ask Peter to review and report back to this board as to potential next steps, as along with some costs and, and kind of game planning that out and where that might lead us.
Yeah, I would add to that, and if anybody, I'm sure that everybody would be fine with this. What would be a realistic projection of a timeframe for going forward with the declaratory judgment?
Okay.
And vis a vis our town meeting? I can't imagine that we would be able to get a declaratory judgment.
Happen before.
But it would be good to know what he thinks the, a reasonable timeframe would be for that.
But, you know, if he could also name some realistic and plausible scenarios, right? Like whether it's three or four. He probably can't cost them exactly, but yeah, I know.
I don't think there's four. I wish there was four. I don't think there's four.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think at this point, it's just the declaratory judgment question.
You should.
And then the, I would add to that, in addition to the town meeting timing, it's the state, the, the state timing for compliance, I think that's July 14.
Yeah.
And as a reminder, it may feel like forever for folks, but I've only been chair of this board for about, you know, this is, I think, my third meeting, so not counting town meeting. So, and this is our third conversation about MBTA communities. So we are trying to talk about it more now, and I think it's been helpful for us to talk about it, not always fun, but helpful for the town to hear what different folks are thinking. And that's why I think we owe it to the town to continue to do what Mr. Daley said, which is to provide them with as much information as possible. And one of the items that we have on our warrant would actually provide us with some resources to do that over the course of the summer. Unless we, we kept that one, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
You're the fourth chair to deal with this.
Hopefully the last. Any other thoughts or comments?
All right, let's move along. Number seven, town council RFQ review and interview dates. Mr. Milano?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the members know, I distributed the applications from firms interested in working as town council and/or labor council. Four firms applied for town council, Harrington Heap, KP Law, MTC, which is Mead, Tallerman, Costa, and Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane, which is Peter Mello's present firm. In addition to that, Clifford &amp; Kenny, which is a labor council firm, applied just for labor council. Harrington Heap, KP, and Murphy, Hesse, applied for labor in addition to town council. So I think, you know, members have those qualifications. We are going back just to confirm with each of the firms that, you know, the lead attorney that they've identified is available for our town meeting and committed to our town meeting. So those kind of like paperwork, homework that we have to go through. We expect to have a first round internal interview panel that I'm working on and setting up. But ultimately, the second round interviews and the selection is by this board. So we do need to be thinking about a date by which this board is interested in setting aside, I'd say, three to five hours, depending on if we bring in all four firms for this board to interview. We had always earmarked a July 1 start date. There's no hard and fast rule that it needs to be July 1. So between the town meeting, between a potential retreat, if June is starting to get backed up and that doesn't feel realistic, if there's a target date in the summer, that might make more sense. We're willing, we can work with that and work towards that. But I just wanted to get the ball rolling in terms of talking about availability to set aside that kind of time, whether it's during a day or to set aside a special meeting on an evening to take care of the interview process for this board.
Is this meant to be in person or?
I wouldn't, yes, I would expect them all to come in person and attend.
And it's not, it's not done in, is it an executive session?
It's an open session, discussion, interview, and appointment.
But we're not trying to do this before the June town meeting?
No. There's no particular need to do that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think. So I know when Henry Wayne Barnes, I believe was the chair of the town administration, one of the member, I mean, do you want to bring them all in before the full board?
It's, you're a lawyer. If you, if the board were for a separate process, we're, we're all ears. But I think, you know, this, this is town council, it's the first change.
I think it's a good idea.
Ever?
You want to bring them in before the whole board?
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah.
So we're going to have to set some time. How long do you want to give each one?
I'd say planned, I mean, 45 minutes to an hour per firm, and that would be four firms. So we're entirely talking a four to five hour block.
Well, do we think that the, so there's going to be, oh, sorry, go ahead.
All on one day?
I think you have to.
We could split it if you want. That doesn't, it's.
But if it's televised, if you split it, if it's televised, the one, two, one and the first one, you get the benefit of seeing and having, it's like you get the homework before the, before you take the test, you know, you get the.
If we're streaming it, I could, I could also sit in the home and watch this.
You could do that, too. You could. We'll ask them not to.
I guess, but, so we've got, there's an initial interview that will be done by town. Is it possible that you guys will sort of say, okay, here of the four applications, only two really merit interview?
I, with only four having applied, I, I don't know that we, and they're all firms that have multiple municipal clients. They're all well-qualified. So I feel like there would be a, unless, you know, there was somebody that they're identifying as a lead attorney to be severely underqualified, which from looking at the applications, that's not the case. I think they're four high-quality firms that are worth this board really weighing.
So then the purpose of the first panel is to just provide us with the background or on?
And feedback from staff and other board and committee chairs who will interact a lot with town council.
So who's going to do that interview with you?
So I've reached out to the town clerk, the town moderator, the planning board chair, the chair of the Board of Appeals, to try to have them be able to provide some insight to this board prior to your interviews and your selection.
Would it make sense? Would it make sense to have a, an executive session to narrow it down?
Nothing.
And then?
For this kind of appointment, it should be done in open session.
No, but just to narrow it down from four to two, and then we have two hours to three hours, let's have a five hour.
The board could, but it should be an open session rather than executive.
Have there been any established selection criteria?
I think it's, you know, we had criteria in the RFQ.
Right.
And so we're evaluating to make sure they meet all that. I, I do think it's, for me, going to be the references that we run and then kind of rapport and a lot more subjective than truly, you know, objective criteria to evaluate against.
Like a hard scores.
Exactly, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, as I say, they're all firms that I'm familiar with. I've worked with two of them, so I can speak to the firms as being qualified. And then it's about, you know, the rapport with the council, the relationships that we look to build with them from there. And, and, you know, their ability to present, their ability to answer questions on the fly, respond to town meeting, respond at select board meetings and stuff, which is, again, more subjective than.
Two outside of Murphy, Hesse?
I'm sorry?
Including Murphy, Hesse. One other plus Murphy, Hesse, or two besides?
Oh, sorry. Murphy, Hesse and MTC are the two that I'm very familiar with.
And what was the date that we were saving for our retreat?
We haven't.
We haven't set. Okay, I was going to say, it's not on my calendar if we have one.
I'm running out of time. Hurry up.
I was going to suggest, so I guess this is still kind of in the scope. I was gonna suggest, so I guess this is still kind of in the scope. I'm gonna be out of town on the week of June 23rd, where we have, we have our meeting on the 24th. Obviously, town meeting is the 16th, probably 17th also. We have a meeting scheduled on the 10th. I know that the, the Governor Stotan folks are gonna report, wanted to report back at the second meeting in June, which is the 24th. I guess my question is, if we, does the 21st look like a date for folks, which is a Saturday, that would work? I hear noises that indicate maybe not.
21st of June?
21st of June, yeah.
All day is gone.
How about the 20th of June, which is a Friday during the day?
But like a half a day?
Yeah. Do like a, like a morning or an afternoon session? I don't know if people can spare that from work. Or we could do a Thursday night on the 19th.
19th is a holiday.
It's a holiday.
We're not doing that, no, no.
Alternatively, I think maybe we should think about doing a doodle poll or something like that, where we could try to.
Do we need all five?
What's that?
Do we need all five?
All five.
Of us?
Of us. For a treat?
No, for the, for the interview.
For the interviews?
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm.
I'm not giving you the out.
No, I'm, I'm like.
It doesn't mean.
So, so the, the interview part, this is historic, like this has never happened, this is, they've been here since like 1985.
Right.
This is never, we've never done this. This is unprecedented.
Probably be almost then.
And I, I think if that's the case, maybe it makes sense to, I can do a poll and look at really July, not worry about meeting a July 1 deadline. It was our goal, but I, there's no hard and fast reason why it needs to be a fiscal year start.
Yeah, maybe somebody will pull that and then I'll narrow the poll.
Make life easier.
Oh, my God.
If they can't work flexibly, I mean.
So I'll look, I'll, maybe I can follow up with members for following the week of July 4th, that, a couple of those weeks in July, to see what members have.
I think that would be great. There's, I mean, there's probably gonna be some conflicts, but I think we, you know, we try.
Okay.
And then maybe in the same email, we could try to look for dates for the retreat and just see what we can get to work for everybody.
Okay.
I think with the retreat, we, two hours maybe.
Okay.
Maybe we could do a retreat.
Kidding.
We could, we could. We could do the interview with the retreat. I mean, it's, we have to be in, it would be executive session, but we could be open session.
No, the retreat would be open session as well.
Oh, the retreat's open session. It's just not streamed. Okay.
I think your interview was on retreat day. Was it your interview, can we recall?
The first round.
It was retreat day. So Mr. Chair, just by thought, would you object to maybe having a former member this, like maybe Katie Conlon, someone who spent a lot of time, is it like an attorney?
For the, for the first round?
Yeah, sit with him on the first round.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah, that's the one I hadn't, I reached out to any former members. I think Katie would be.
Katie would be happy.
I think she'd be great.
I like that idea.
I mean, I think she has the historical knowledge, she's been around, she's from mayor, she's bond council, and she knows what it's like to, I just, I think that would be a good idea.
Sure.
Okay. Not, not that I want to change, but I just, I.
No, no, we hadn't.
When I listen to you say the names, I'm like, uh.
We hadn't reached a final crew for that yet. And the other thing is, perhaps we would suggest not interviewing all four. I was just basing on the applications that we saw that I would expect more likely than not that the four would be recommended, but if, if not, then obviously we'll report back. But at the very least, we'll, that gives us a little bit more runway to work with, too. And then I'll circulate and try to grab some dates that work for a select board meeting in July. That's a, this, this would be the main item, if not the only one.
Okay.
And you, so you expect each one of them would put forward a lead who would be town council?
That was a requirement in the application.
Right, so the.
The lead, the lead contact.
All of the firms look reputable, it's just a question of making sure that all of the, the general councils, if their, if their references come back, you know, questionable or something like that, would be something.
Correct.
For the individuals that we would flag.
And ensuring that the lead has the capacity in working and to understand that they're not just adding us to their list, but there is actual room for us to be added, and they have the capacity and availability to support what we need.
So given that, so there's, there's five of us, obviously. I'm assuming we would probably want to have maybe 45 minutes to an hour with each candidate. I think it would also behoove us to think about the questions that we're gonna ask so that we, I mean, best practices in hiring are you're asking the same questions to each candidate and each person's asking the same thing. So it might be worth thinking, and I don't know if we'd have to do that in an executive session so that we can keep our pop question secret, but it might be worth thinking about who, you know, which questions we want to have asked, and then also if citizens have thoughts of, residents have thoughts of things that they'd like to hear, they could also make suggestions and we can see about incorporating those. And so maybe we can, on, at our June 10th meeting, if we have, we could have a brief executive session at the end and just kind of review the, what we'll be doing for the interviews.
Okay.
And then if there's any other executive session business. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, I think the question was asked about a rubric as well, for are we scoring?
Yes, so we'll, we'll produce, we have Nick Condon's working on one in terms of evaluating the applications received, and then based on questions, we can develop a follow-up to guide the grading during the actual interviews.
Do you think that would be ready by June 10th?
I will try.
Possible.
Endeavor to.
Okay. If not, we also meet on the next week at.
At town meeting.
At town meeting, so we can just look at it quickly there, too. Anything else on this one?
Not for me. Just, I know, I think a couple of members might be going to the MMAs event, so I'll get a list of, the list of the other communities. So if you happen to meet a select board member from another community, ask them who their town council is and what they think.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea. Who's going to that? When is it?
13th.
Are you going too? The 13th? All right. Very exciting.
That's not.
I found it. I am admittedly a little nerdier than Mr. Wells, but I did find it enjoyable. So we're gonna move on then to eligibility applications to the Community Preservation Committee, Milton Greenway Concept, Boat Landing Ramp, Town Center Basketball Court, Park Improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I included in the packet a little background on the first two. So the Milton Greenway Concepts, I just want to say is, we really, eligibility application phase for the Community Preservation Committee is where you submit with a project idea, and they tell you whether that project idea is worth pursuing or not, in terms of whether it complies with the CPA rules and the law. For the most part, we have a good handle on what would be eligible or not. For this first one, Milton Greenway, this is a concept that came, that is in the Milton Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan to build a greenway, essentially the length of Brook Road from east to west across Milton. There's already some bike infrastructure on Brook Road, not the length of it, but the idea would be to see what it would look like if it could be a shared use path. So this would be a fully off-road pathway for cyclists, for pedestrians, for joggers, for people out taking a walk, and to really connect Milton in a different way, east to west. The idea would be at this phase, from the eligibility application standpoint, just to see if a shared use path is eligible. My understanding is, from looking at other communities, they sometimes are. So getting feedback from the Community Preservation Committee on whether this is even eligible as an idea in the first place, and then coming back to this board with a stronger pitch around why to apply. My vision on the application would really just be a really high level concept plan in terms of where do we have the right of way space, what sacrifices would have to be made in order to implement a shared use path across Milton like this. But this was the main recommendation in the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, was to get this connection built out slowly if possible. This might be a way to get some more planning work done. But that's the Milton Greenway. Again, seeking eligibility application at this time. I can move on to the next one, unless there are any specific questions?
There are, they're seeking it. Oh, we're seeking it. Who's gonna see?
I would apply. I'm letting this board know.
These would be the four for town.
Okay, I got it. Okay.
The boat ramp at Milton Landing, know it's eligible, we've, we weren't. It was not awarded last year, so reapply this year. And just for a little bit of context, for those who are unaware, that the boat ramp down at the landing has an old archaic launching system. The idea would be to replace it with a true boat ramp that could, folks could use their, their own car with their own trailer to launch boats for recreational boating. Through improvements down at the landing, through Dexter Southfield, there is a low-profile dock that is open for public use, so you can bring down your canoe, your kayak, your rowing shell, if you'd like to use those. But for true recreational boaters, there really isn't an alternative there. So again, something we've applied for before, this would continue the engineering and environmental permitting around a boat ramp project as the landing area and the pont at the saltwater side is contaminated. So to remove and dredge in the vicinity of the boat ramp, we would have to dispose of those materials. So this would further the design work to get in a better place on that project. And the third one is the Town Center Basketball Court, just outside this building here. We did apply and receive funding to redo the court a year and a half ago. We had applied for $75,000. The recommendation from CPC was $40,000. We've been unable to get the project done for that amount. So this neighborhood association here had a meeting last week that conflicted with our meeting on Wednesday, and are continuing to advocate for improvements to this court. Christine Stanton had worked on a bocce court concept with Bill Madden, who's a landscaped architect here in town, to go adjacent to it. So there's a couple of components here that we want to make sure are eligible as we work towards, again, a true funding application to get additional funding to finish the project, to be able to build it out, and potentially roll in the Council on Aging's proposal around an alternative use. So three eligibility applications to submit to CPC, get some guidance from the committee on, and report back to the board as to head of any potential funding applications in the fall.
Questions?
Two.
Mr. Wells?
So on the basketball court, which we've been trying to do, which is right here, we drove right by it, you want to apply for 40,000 again?
I don't think we need 40, but we made, it's really about what else we need to get done. It, it looks like 65 to 70 would do the court with hoops. If we want to do any kind of fencing, any kind of benches, any kind of other improvements, that price goes up. And then the bocce court idea from Christine would be an additional cost for this area.
And the second one, the landing boat ramp, you want to do this to offset the earmark that you have?
This would be design work to keep rolling so that we can put the kind of money to work on actual expenditure of project, project expenses rather than additional design work.
Okay.
Other questions? I just have a couple. For the Milton Greenway, which I think is a great idea, I know that there's already been some work on Brook, particularly, I'm thinking of this section by Pierce, where there's the built-in traffic lanes, and would that all just then get?
So I think that's part of what we would want to understand in terms of moving to the funding phase, like what are we actually looking for? Because when I was speaking with DPW about it, it's more about identifying, because we could leave that segment alone and just think about the rest of it.
Yeah.
Or alternatively, are we, is it really to get a concept idea to take, remove that infrastructure and move it all to an off, completely off-street shared use path that's completely protected and off the street? So it's a higher, safer level of access, even more so than that is presently. Or alternatively, do we look at a pathway where there isn't anything currently? And there's portions of Brook that they're coming up on the pavement plan, so if we're gonna make any kind of big changes, it's, you know, prudent to do so before we touch the road itself.
On the boat ramp, we would charge a fee for the usage of the boat ramp?
No, it requires, required to be free.
Required to be free.
Required to be free.
And then for, I guess that if we don't receive the funding for the Town Center courts, I guess my question would be, what can we do for 40K? Like if we've got that money, like what's possible? Because it would be, it's, you know, it'd be too bad to just, you know, sit on it and not.
No, I agree. I think we would possibly look at other sources to get the project done right.
Okay.
We have, one of the companies that has done a few courts in town, they were the ones at 65 to do it right, to paint it right, to put in the right hoops. So there's probably a little wiggle room between 40 and 65, but it's a question of how much, and I, I don't have it this year in the budget to just go ahead and do it.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we're stuck.
We have a budget problem.
Well, we need to apply for 65.
Right, but even if we get it, it does, it's not available till July 1 of 2026. So we're a year and two months away from the money being available.
Do you have how much in there now?
40,000 available now.
What's the estimate on the bocce court?
I'm sorry?
How much is the bocce court? Is that number?
I have it, I can pull it up in a moment. I just, I didn't want to misspeak, and I didn't dig it out before the meeting.
Can, can I ask one more question about the Milton Greenway concept?
You may.
Don't be shy, ask the question.
I know, I know. So I'm, I would assume that a traffic study would be part of the Greenway concept, or is it just looking at the physical layout, or would there also be a traffic study factored into?
So I think that's what we'd have to game plan out, because I think the way I was approaching it was even higher level than that to say, where do we actually have the right of way space and where don't we? Like, is this even possible for the duration or not?
Yeah.
Because the CPA can fund open space projects and recreation, passive recreational projects. So rail trails and shared use paths would all comply for that.
Yeah.
But to build out on-road bike lanes would not. So it's really kind of even a higher level, is, is the space there?
Yeah.
Or is there, you know, there's a lot of street trees and places, there's, they're just too much in the way that we wouldn't want to permanently uproot and destroy for the creation of a shared use path? So I view it as even a higher level than that before, you know, if it's feasible and the space is there and it could be possible, then moving into design, looking at a traffic study and traffic impacts is the first step there.
Mr. Wells?
So it's highly, like unlikely we could do this all on one street.
Oh, yes.
This is gonna have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. On Brook.
It's for Brook, right?
The idea is to do Brook the entire duration, but it might not be possible to do that.
I'm just thinking of parts on Brook where.
Gets tired.
To do what you want, you're talking actually like a bike path like we have, but just like what's on Truman, by the side of Truman.
Correct.
It's a separate path off the sidewalk.
Correct.
And not interrupting.
Correct. That would be the ideal, and that is why it would be potentially eligible for CPA money. It's just another way to think outside the box and get some money to move this project forward. But the alternative, building out bike lanes and everything else, that wouldn't be CPA eligible at all.
So then when it runs into St. Agath is there, then that would be the terminus?
The end of it, yeah.
Okay. So basically, Blue Hill Parkway to St. Agath is essentially, okay.
Speaking of which, remember, when we get to chair's report, talk about the new MBTA bus routes.
Okay.
Just don't let you forget.
I won't let you forget. Anything else on this one?
Just to close out on the bocce court, it looked like upwards of 55,000, they think, think, on a very high-level estimate.
Just for bocce court?
Correct.
All right. Anything else on this? Mr. Milano, you just, do you need a motion from us on the eligibility applications?
No, I'll apply for them as the town minister and report back.
All right. Okay, then moving on to item nine, MSBA initial compliance certification. Is that something to do with the thing that I just signed and gave to Lynn?
Probably.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to, oh, okay.
No, I'm just going to, we're going to abide by their rules. And regs is essentially what this says in nine pages and over and over again.
All right.
I'll give you a motion. I'm moved to approve that.
One question. Is the school building committee attached to that? Is that part of that?
To approve this? There's, oh, sorry, yet. This is the first action item, is to approve the initial compliance certification, which the school committee, the superintendent, and the select board have to sign. The school committee approved it last year, so the chair and the superintendent have signed it. I included the school building committee as backup in the packet for the next item.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Massachusetts School Building Authority initial compliance certification.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your packet was the first draft of the school building committee forum that we need to submit to the MSBA. We need to do so by June 30. The ICC that was just approved is due May 30. One of the required members on the school building committee, and I should have mentioned this at the last meeting, and I just neglected to remember it, was that the select board is required to have a member on the school building committee. So we had talked about the application from Mike Zulus, but the select board has, under our town meeting actions, has two designees or appointments to the school building committee. But to be compliant with the MSBA rules and regs, a member of this board must be on it.
And Glenn is our, Glenn Hoffman?
And Glenn Hoffman is the other appointee. So at this time, we do need a select board member, not necessarily at this meeting, but we need a select board member to be appointed to the school building committee. And we would need to do that before June 30.
Question. Does Mr. Cohen continue to serve until...
It's up to him and the board.
Are they meeting? Are you meeting? Are you guys meeting or no?
Yeah, they're on meeting. I'm just having a hard time managing my life and...
It's totally fine to, you know, I was on affordable housing trust and...
If it was after MBTA and after this, I could give you an answer, but until then, I'm...
I have a feeling there'll be lots of schoolwork to be done. So if this one is, falls outside of your bailiwick, we're happy to, yeah.
I have to decline, thank you. Sorry.
That's fine. Anybody else feeling excited about the school building committee? Mr. Daley?
You want to wait?
We want to wait?
You have time.
We want to marinate on it?
You can put on the next agenda. There's no action required for this evening.
Okay. All right, unless somebody is hot to trot, we'll move along.
It can't be me, because I have a conflict with MSBA as they, in my other job, so.
I think if it falls to Megan or I, perhaps we need a little bit more time, because we have a couple of committees that we need to convene. And so we can just let us convene those, figure out the time, and then see where we can be on the school building committee.
And I will just say, as this, kind of, you think about this, for the next five months, this committee will not be demanded of a lot. Once we get through eligibility period, we're moving into selecting the owner's project manager, then we're selecting the designer, then we're starting work on the project. I mean, not on the project, but on the getting to ground zero on what are we going to build, where are we going to build it, how are we going to build it, all that. Like, this committee will meet, I'd say, bi-monthly, most likely. They're going to be a very busy group. And, you know, they'll be turnover on the board presumably, so there will, it not necessarily has to be somebody signed up for a five-year commitment to meet every other week, but it will be a significant commitment. They do meet hybrid, so it's not necessarily an in-person commitment, but I just, it is a significant commitment of time. So just sharing.
Is there any problem if it's the chair that sits on that?
No.
All right. Why don't you guys talk about the committees that you're on, and then we can come back to this one on June 10.
Okay.
All right, so we are going to do Community One Stop for Growth Mass Works grant application.
We missed item 11, which I don't have much to report.
We didn't vote on it. I thought we weren't voting.
Oh, 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 sorry. The select board, school committee, warrant committee. We got to come up with a name for this thing. The Giant Budget Committee Charge and Membership.
And I did not distribute anything. I think it may be helpful for the finance committee to meet as well, to discuss it, and we can do that and then report back to the full board.
I just, I also want to throw out a question or an opinion that perhaps we should explore incorporating the planning committee into this.
Planning board?
Or the, yeah, sorry, the planning board somehow into this.
Into the finance committee?
So, yeah, I mean, I think that the planning board makes a lot of decisions and, you know, through, and when we get to building permits and such, you know, it is, it is an important lever for revenue generation for the town. That I think if we're thinking bigger picture, which is the, seems to be what we're getting at with this mega committee, right, this alignment, this coordination, I think the planning board should be in alignment with the financial trajectory of the town. And I think we're seeing some of this, too, when we get into big-picture questions on the MBTA Communities Act zoning. There's a lot of deliberation back and forth, how growth will impact the finances of the town in the future, that it might be good to, and I'm not saying we definitely need to do it, but I'm saying I think it would be a good idea to give some consideration to pulling in folks who are helping to plan our path forward.
Financially?
Yeah, in terms of the finances, the discussions that we have on the town's finances.
It's an interesting, oh, sorry, Mr. Kane.
My only comment was when I, I don't know if I was the first one, but I was one to suggest this. And the reason I suggested it is because it was really school finance committee questions. Like, I was sitting in on the school finance committee, and questions would come up, and it would take us two weeks to get it done because the select board, nobody from the select board, or Nick especially, you came into some of the meetings, and we could answer questions right there. I actually, in that particular scenario, didn't see many instances, and I'm not saying there won't be, but I didn't see many planning board issues. It was really finance committee from the board, finance committee from the schools, and then the warrant committee, even a little less so, because it became, at that point in time. But it really just came down to, as I sat there, and I don't mention names, Mark Lawren agreed with me, you know, it was nice to have everybody in the room so we could get stuff done. That was the main thing. And it was mostly those type of issues, but...
So maybe I have a misunderstanding of what the mission of this group is.
I think, well, I think that's what we're trying to work through.
Because if you wanted, I think, my opinion is if you wanted a truly strategic group looking at this and understanding how each of these boards align, I just think it's a worthy consideration of how does the planning board factor into this.
Mr. Wells?
So the only, the only point, when we're talking about that money, it's not the planning board, it's the building inspectors on, that's where the, he's the money man. I mean, he's, he or she, I mean, that's where the money comes from, like, just...
But I think the big picture of, you know...
Then bring him in, now.
We don't have one. We don't have one. That's why I said, oh, we don't have one.
Like, the long-range financial planning aspect of it, I think that's, that is a good observation. New growth the last few years because of a few projects has been much higher than it has been historically, that is contributing significantly to additional revenue. So going forward, how is that going to shape? I think, you know, I think there's two elements of it, is the really big picture, which I think this new group should be focusing on, and then facilitating through the budget process. So it's like almost wearing slightly two different hats, but I think it's worth, kind of, we could follow up in a finance committee meeting, talk about that, and then regroup with the finance, school committee chair.
Sometimes things can be too high-level, too. So, you know, my feelings aren't going to get hurt if this idea gets abandoned, but...
Mr. Wells?
Is this board going to have a vote on the budget that gets submitted to? That's, because that's the, so under the town, under the former government that we have now with five, that was the whole five-year project, was to create a five-year policy board and a strong town administrator and make the town administrator responsible for the budget, like, it's his. So that's the only, my only question is, I know you're creating this big, but is that board going to have a vote on, and they're just, it's one more, that's my only question that's going to...
I wouldn't think so.
The schools dominate, because it's the biggest part of the budget. It's the biggest...
It's the biggest expense.
Biggest part.
I think that you, I think, Megan, you've raised, Ms. Hager, you've raised a really, a good point in that, for me, it's still a little bit, like, I think that the select board finance committee, I expect that the select board finance committee and the school finance committee are still going to need to meet sort of as a duo, just because that is where the line, like, not the lion's share, but, you know, about half of the town budget plus is going to that destination. So I think then, for the purposes of thinking about this larger committee, I do think it's, you know, if we're asking them to really help think about the long-term structural plan for the town, I do think that the planning board, it could potentially play a role. And if they're not setting budget, if they're not voting on budgets, but rather making recommendations, I wouldn't see the harm in it. I think maybe they might just want to recommend one member to come over as kind of like an ex officio or something like that. But we could certainly put the question to the planning board if they would want to have a representative on the board. And then if the two of you guys want to meet as the finance committee and then come back with your recommendations, too, that should be fine. Mr. Wells?
And we haven't citizens, too? Did you talk about this at all?
On the, on this big, the big giant board?
Yeah. No, no, that's on the school plan. I don't know, I'm like, I know that there was a request to have, for the school committee to have a citizen, and they want us to have a citizen. I don't think they'd be voting, because the more votes you put into this, the harder you're making your life just, but ex officio, I think it's a great idea. I mean...
Well, this is coming out of the warrant committee recommendation, right?
Yeah.
So that was with the school budget in mind first, right? So if we're, perhaps we need to sort of refine that charge of what this committee would be doing. Maybe that's what you're saying about the finance committee meeting first?
Yes.
So if we just kind of gather everyone and say, let's look at all the budgets and finances, we kind of got to have a better streamlined mission, because we have so many other committees along the way.
How do they all fit together?
Right. I think the vision was, you know, as from a really kind of entry level, where is, what is our budget this year looking like? What are our revenue forecasts? Here's what our revenue forecasts look like, you know, questions, kind of, bring it back to your board or committee, let's reconvene in a month's time. If there's any questions, follow up, we'll refine the forecast. And to give, especially over the next couple of years, with, you know, an override not being an option, then, you know, that revenue forecast is going to be not easy, but it's going to be pretty cut and dried, and there's not going to be a lot. So it's about setting those budget expectations and then facilitating through the budget season as issues arise. And so, you know, speaking to that kind of forecasting and revenue forecasting and how the planning and economic development may play a role, I think that is worthwhile. I don't, in terms of a resident member, I think, from my view, it's not really necessary, because this isn't a policymaking board. It's more of hearing information, questioning the information, then sharing it and reporting back to your own board or committee from there. But it's, it can be shaped that way. And I think John, John, with the idea was trying to facilitate the things that come up throughout the budget process and to make sure we're all working from the same page, which has to come out of this from the first step. But then, how can we make it more successful long-term as well, to these points that you've both raised?
I think the citizen participation is a good question. It would also be, you know, are these open meetings that folks can sit in? And, you know, that would be probably the easiest way to do it. And then I'm sure that the citizens of the town would, the residents of the town would enjoy more municipal meetings.
Oh, yeah.
And participate accordingly.
And I think that was mentioned, that any of these groups, you know, select board, finance committee, school committee, could bring a citizen in at any meeting, you know?
So it sounds like what we're...
You look excited.
No, no, no. I'm excited.
I mean, one of the things...
I live for this.
I mean, we were very lucky, beyond lucky, to get a $9.5 million. All right, I mean, just, but you have to make it last. I mean, you have to, and don't forget, the school building committee, you're talking about a number bigger than we've even said out loud yet, I think, by the time you're all said and done, so. And that's even with a 40%, 48% reimbursement. So I think being as proactive as you can right now is probably a pretty good idea. I mean, I always say you need to be visionary anyway, but like, I don't know if I'll be here a year from now, but you don't want to be sitting in this room looking at another OMG.
Yeah.
How the heck are we in such a, you know, a massive deficit again? I mean, you're always going to have the pressure, as you know, like, healthcare, those, that just, the budget, the pressure's there. But this one here, this $9.5 million has got to last. It's got to, and sometimes you're going to be able to put your foot down and say, okay, we got, okay, you know, just, I mean...
Mr. Cohen?
You were asking, and I think back to this issue, I think next step, the most important thing to me seems to be the charge. What is this committee to do, you know?
I agree. So I think, I think that's exactly right. So it sounds like, you have charge, number one on my list here. So it sounds to me like there's three things that we need for this. So the first would be, I think, unless anybody objects, offering the planning board an ex officio seat on this committee, if they want one, makes sense. I think the finance committee will meet and discuss, and then it would be great if we had a charge, a draft charge maybe, if the finance committee can meet, and then based both on this conversation and whatever the finance committee discusses, Mr. Milano, maybe you could come back to us on the 10th with a draft charge for this group and a better name.
Should we involve, should we involve the warrant committee in that, since this was their recommendation?
So we've been in touch with the warrant committee chair, and I can check on him.
What did you call it? What did you call it?
I just, the big, I don't know.
The mega committee.
Mega committee, yeah, I don't know.
Can I suggest a little joke?
Please.
The beautiful, what is it? The beauty committee?
Oh, no, no, we don't want to go in that direction. It's always going to be twisted for that one.
Just a joke. It's just a joke. What is a beautiful committee?
It will be big, and it will be beautiful, and it will be a committee.
Good one, good one.
All right. So it sounds like we have agreed upon next steps there, Mr. Milano? Anything else from us on that?
No, thank you.
Okay. So now, item 12, Community One Stop for Growth Mass Works Grant Application. I believe, Ms. Hager, you're refusing yourself from this discussion?
Yep.
So I'm just explaining to the folks who may be wondering why you're taking your microphone off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we are, there's a June 4 deadline for all of the grant programs under the Community One Stop. While we have not applied for them last year because of the town status, with that kind of up in the year, depending on where MBTA Communities lands us, we don't want to miss a potential grant cycle. So looking at potential grant programs under the Community One Stop, Mass Works has a planning grant where we're working on an application that would design infrastructure improvements in East Milton Square, along Adams, Mechanic, and Franklin, due to the, all the adjacencies with the projects going on there, 440 Granite, which is that Granite Mechanic, and 40B in the heart of the square. This would review our underground infrastructure, if anything needs to be updated. The water main on Adams at least was done in the last 10 years, so we likely would be able to avoid that. But any other underground infrastructure that needs to be improved, as well as improvements to the roads and sidewalks and other street-facing infrastructure in the area. So it's about, these grants are capped at $500,000. It's just designed, we wouldn't be applying for a full $500,000. Working with consulting engineers, TEC, to pull that application together for the June 4 deadline and get that submitted. It's got to, it will be graded, and then, depending on compliance status, it'll determine whether the grant is awarded, plus how the application scores.
Questions?
I get it. You want a motion?
I don't need an approval from the board at this time. Just want to share.
So this is just for folks who made, so this is a design phase? So assuming that we applied for that, then, and we're successful in getting it, then there would be...
The idea would be in 12 months' time to apply for the full...
Is the 10% match also applied to the design phase, or is that just...
It does, and we have, between Chapter 90 monies and other monies, we would be able to fund the match through our own budget.
Anything else from anyone? Sounds like a great opportunity. All right, let's move on. Please, please join us again. So I think we talked about select board retreat date, so we kind of have a plan there. So let's move on to 14.
Report, and I think I may have said previously, but the project is complete. They have occupied the shelter. This shelter is located off the access road, the number is 100 access road, which is located across, off of Randolph Ave, near, adjacent to the old town dump. So the, it was occupied a couple of weeks ago now, as we were finalizing the building, getting the building squared away and operational. So we will be working on closing out the old shelter, boarding that up and making a game plan for that. But pleased to say that the project is complete and open, which has been a long time coming in Milton, even since many years before I arrived here.
That's fantastic news.
And we have not coordinated any kind of ribbon cutting, but we will do that and formally invite everybody up to see it.
Okay. I can't bring my kids, otherwise I'll come home with another animal. That sounds great. Any questions on Animal Shelter?
And just so, we've talked about it a lot in the past, but this is a project that is only partly funded by the town, a $700,000 contribution from taxpayers, $700,000 contribution from the Milton Animal League, but largely the donation was from the Copeland Foundation for $2.5 million towards the construction of the shelter. The Animal League, in addition, funded all the soft costs and design work for the project. The Animal League, in addition, funded all the soft costs and design work for the project.
And we are grateful to everyone, Cunningham, Cunningham Foundation, everyone who was a part of that. Moving on, I do like to say just a word about David Chestnut. I warned, I think I warned John earlier about this. So, the David Chestnut Jazz Festival at Eustace State, I'd just like to call people's attention to this because I, you know, I think Milton's history is fascinating and there are lots of facets that get sort of, you know, lost in, in, in the 400-plus years that we've, that people have been, well, really thousands of years that people have been living around here. David Chestnut, for those who are unfamiliar with him, was a black employee at the Eustace State in the early, in the early 1900s, late 1800s. I'm going to have to do this off the top of my head now. And he was a real pillar of the African-American community, both in Milton and in surrounding communities, was a trumpeter, I believe, if my memory is serving correctly, and was very much a sort of out-and-out musician and convened black musicians on a regular basis. And so, I think it's wonderful that the Eustace State continues to recognize this historic figure, an early pillar of, of the black community in Milton, with a jazz festival at the Eustace State. So, with that said, if anybody else has...
Are you producing this?
I'm not, I'm not. I just, I started reading about him and, you know, I'm a sucker for musicians, as you know, Mr. Wells, so I will always opine about them.
Move to approve the one-day liquor license?
Please, please, go ahead.
For Roundhead Brewery Company located at 1 Westinghouse Plaza, Boston, Mass. for Saturday, August 9, 2025, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. for the David Chestnut Jazz Festival at the Eustace State, 1424 Canton Ave, Milton, Mass.
And seconded by Mr. Wells?
I seconded it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I want to get your tickets.
I'm going to be out of town for this one. I know. I'm really feeling bad about it, but I've been before and they're fantastic. Okay, we had already done item 16 and 17.
16, 17, and 18. Oh, no, yeah.
18 is discussion approval of meeting minutes, April 22nd, May 5th, May 6th, and May 12th.
18 is the special town meeting date.
Oh, yeah. 17, 18.
Where am I?
He jumped it.
18.
Oh, I guess the motions aren't... Oh, oh, sorry. I'm looking at the motions and not this. So, the fall special town meeting date. Do we have a...
So, according to our bylaw, the 4th Monday in October is what we're supposed to target for this meeting. We typically try to avoid that in years where there are elections, but this is not one of those years. So, that date is available and folks are available for October 27th for the fall town meeting, if this board would like to lock in that date.
You motion or you just want to do it?
We should call it.
We could do a motion.
Like, you all right, I'll make a motion? So, I'll make a motion for October what?
27th.
27th. Do you need a second day too?
That works.
Just, okay.
I second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, what would be wonderful, Mr. Milano may be at a, it doesn't have to be the 10th of June, because I feel like I've said the 10th of June for like 12 different items. But if we had a, a calendar of running up to that, to share, so that people could really understand when we need to have discussion on articles done and, you know, make sure that we don't cause the untimely demise of our warrant committee by making them work for hours upon end.
You got it.
Okay. Then, no, sorry, we're going to item 19, which is discussion approval, meeting minutes, April 22nd, 2025, May 5, 2025, May 6, 2025, and May 12, 2025.
Make that a motion, I'll second it.
I'll make them, we need to do them in two bits because we have two members here that weren't part of the April meeting, unless I'm doing my math wrong.
Right.
So, I'll make a motion to approve April 22nd, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve... Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm staying.
Sorry, my bad. I'm trying to get, I'm looking at the clock.
No, go for it, we're almost there.
I get at that point where like, we're getting out of here. I'll make a motion, yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve May 5th, May 6th, and May 12, 2025.
Have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Okay. I think then we will move to town administrator's report. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as we move to the June 16 town meeting, so that warrant report is off to the printer, it will be missing a couple of recommendations from the warrant committee. However, they're meeting both tomorrow night and Thursday night. Thursday night's with the planning board, so we expect to be able to post those recommendations and comments to the website as soon as the warrant committee completes those. So, feel free to check back to the town meeting webpage to see updates on that. We had the Memorial Day activities yesterday at cemetery, so thanks to the cemetery trustees and Superintendent Lisa Hearn for having us and for all those who contributed behind the scenes to make that another nice ceremony this year. We did make an offer for a veterans agent. Before I get front over my skis, I'm not going to announce names or anything yet, but I think tomorrow or the next I should be able to report to the select board and I'll make a public announcement of the new veterans service officer for the Randolph Milton District. We are, we did repost the planning director position. That's back up. It's been on our town webs, on the town website all along, but we did start to re-advertise that as we look to fill that position, hopefully. We conducted interviews for building commissioner last week and hope to make an offer on that position this week. Knock on wood, all goes well there. The sport had talked about having department heads cycle in. I've been working with DPW Director Marina Fernandez. She is available on June 10th. So, if the boards are minimal, we can have her come in. If there's any specific DPW water, sewer, stormwater, snow and ice, all of the above talk topics you'd like covered, I can ask her to prepare accordingly, but we'll plan to have Marina here on June 10th.
That's wonderful.
And just as we approach the end of our fiscal year, I had just, I had notified the board of how our snow and ice year ended and we, it was an expensive winter this year between the, the cycle of the storms that we're in, which happened, seemed to be a lot of weekend storms, one weekend plus Martin Luther King Day storm, which cost us more than it would otherwise, as we're bringing in folks for OT and double time and a sneak, you know, more events than we've had in the past couple of years. So, we've had a heavy snow and ice deficit. We do spend in deficit through DPW. We have a few different options to raise that, which we'll be working on over the next few weeks. And then, health insurance continues to be a ongoing source of concern for our budget, both this year and going into future years. We are moving forward with our premium increase of 14%. So, that takes effect for the plan period July through June. That's the highest increase in spending some time and the costs have not slowed and the whole market is just in a little bit of turmoil right now, so hopefully that will slow. But we're also seeing that pressure point on the fiscal year 2025 budget. So, we have had significant turnbacks in the health insurance budget the last couple of years, hundreds of thousands on spent in that budget. This will not be one of those years. We will overspend the health insurance budget and are identifying other ways to cover that budget. We just have more people on our plan. The plans are very expensive and just are continuing to work through that. So, a couple of budget pressures as we approach the year-end close that we're working through. And that's my report for this evening.
Mr. Wells, I promised you that I wouldn't let you forget the item that you wanted to bring up for the chairman's report, so.
So, I, you want to go first?
Please.
So, yesterday was Memorial Day and I've been going to the, I know for our newest colleagues, it was their first time as members of the board. It's something that I've been going to since I was a kid. People have come to and shared stories and use the power of the day to remember, as you did yesterday, Mr. Zoll, one of them, how important Memorial Day is in this country. Yesterday, when I got there, as soon as I got there, and I saw no band, no chorus, no Boy Scouts, no Girl Scouts, I was like, you could see the looks on people's faces and I don't know if I got my share of texts last night, and there were several posts, including one resident who I don't even know, who posted litany of Memorial Day photos and parades going back into the 1950s. It's such an important day and for as long as I've gone to it, as you know, Mr. Zoll, music is big in our houses. Music is such an important aspect of us who are alive, to be able to recognize those who have passed. There were people buried in that cemetery from every war in this country, from the Revolutionary War, Civil War, the Cuban Crisis, World War I, World War II, Vietnam. There are mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters. You heard the passion of Mr. Comer, who's 93 years old, who talked about visiting the USS Missouri, like he was going to do it tomorrow. I mean, I, I didn't intend to even speak about going to Normandy, which I did last month, and I will never forget that. When they played taps at the end of day and lowered the American flag, it was like the thousands of American soldiers sold standard attention one more time. It's really incumbent upon us that going forward, that we continue as we have, you talk about history and tradition, so many ways to include all of those aspects. Because I feel bad for the two of you, like that was your first one and that was such a missing thing yesterday. And it's important for the kids, it's important for the musicians, it's important for the band to play God Bless America and the National Anthem. It's critical. And that was really a missing thing for yesterday. And I don't want to drag about this, but it, I didn't sleep last night, it weighed on me all night long because, yes, Mr. Rayden is correct, we have one of the most beautiful cemeteries in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to honor those who were buried there. And, I mean, I just think about the rabbi who carries the flag that draped his own father's casket. He brings it every single year. And I just hope, Mr. Chair, that, I, I don't want, I thought of going on the school committee, I'm not going to, but I hope that those who see this and hear me say this tonight, understand just how important that day is for us going forward in this town, that we could continue the tradition particularly in music and then particularly for those kids, the future of the future of this town, you know? Those are the kids who, like my own kid, was an 18-year-old kid and was in Caligard and 9/11 happened, as he joined the Marine Corps. You couldn't have told me that, you could have knocked me over with a baseball bat. I would have never anticipated that in my life. So, that's, I'm not going to drag on about it, but thank you for allowing me to speak to the chairman.
No, you're right. It's a concern that I shared too. Sorry, Mr. Cohen, did you want to go ahead?
And I would like to apologize. I didn't go and I, I'm learning this position and there are things that need to be done and I should have been there and I apologize.
Well, that's, your presence was missed, but, you know, I know Memorial Day can be a tough weekend for, for folks.
Thank you.
Yes, no, you're, you're welcome and as a reminder, we will have another, we will have Veterans Day service as well, which I hope everyone will be able to make. I think maybe, Mr. Milano, you and I can talk. I was, I, I received both the official town story and the story of a teenager that I have in the marching band story about why it wasn't happening. And the teenager's stories, as you know, never match up with the adult stories, so I would love to hear, and if there were safety concerns or something else in that vein that was the reason that we didn't have the marching band, which was suggested to me by the teenager, but again, I'm not sure how that's true. I would love to, to just kind of understand because I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Wells. I was glad that we had the singers that we had, I was glad that we had the, you know, the Girl Scouts that we had and the, and the trumpeter playing taps, which I, as those who attended know, has a special place in my heart. But I, I would like to make sure that we can avoid, it was just such a perfect day for it too.
It's ironic, March parade of the...
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I hear, I hear you, Mr. Wells. For the chair's report, other than that, I attended an event at the Methodist Church on the Blue Hill Parkway for George Floyd, five-year commemorative service that was there. Many members of the Milton community there were there and Milton Interfaith Coalition were there. Thank you for a great turnout and a great event. We heard earlier that the Pride event will be on June 7th, which will be before our next meeting, so I encourage everyone to go to that. Will be at the gazebo as opposed to Pierce, where it's been in the past. Mr. Wells, you have something else?
The hours, just, if you notice, because I don't remember the hours, just hope you repeat the hours, because I didn't remember what they were.
I believe that the, the car parade starts at 1:00 and then the speakers will start around 1:30. From my own experience, you're, you can stay at the gazebo and hang out while the cars drive around town and honk and, and then be there when they, when they come back, or you can participate as a driver. It's, it's quite a scene and it's, it's a lot of fun. Anything else anybody would like the community to be aware of? Okay. Future meeting dates?
See, I will, I will add...
Yes, Mr. Daley?
June 7th, I believe June 7th as well is the day for the Tucker mural commemoration.
You're correct.
Yes, it is. I have that on my, on my schedule.
Yes, I'll be going from Pride to Tucker.
And graduation is this Sunday.
Graduation is on Sunday.
You're all invited. If you, did you get an email?
Yes.
Invitation?
For graduation.
It's this Sunday coming up.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm actually going to be in Denver.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, you won't get your diploma then.
You won't get, you won't get, so for the record, just so you know, when we sit out in the sun for a very long time.
Bring a hat, bring some water, an umbrella. It's, it's a great day. I think that the weather looks okay for it for now, but, you know, it's, it's still a little ways out. And I've got a senior this year, so I'm very excited. Should be, should be a great opportunity. The select board, they want you there by, I think, 11:30.
1:30.
1:30, sorry, thank you, 1:30.
Don't go 1:30.
Bring lunch. Yes. And I think that may be it for, for, for the chair's report. Anything else from a public comment response? I'll just say, I appreciated Ms. Ferrone calling, no, sorry, it wasn't Ms. Ferrone, it was Ms. Felton called in and suggested, just sort of continuing to encourage us to hold, I think, ourselves to the high standards that we should be held to in terms of just resisting personal attacks and that sort of discussion. I think we can always disagree about policy, but we should always try to do it in a way that we get along at the end of the day. And so, I thank her for that, those comments. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, okay. Future meeting dates, June 10. We know special town meeting will be June 16th, 17th, and possibly June 18th. I hope not. As I mentioned earlier, I'm going to be out of town on June 24th and we're, we've also, we're going to be juggling the interview schedule and, as well as the select board retreat. So, we may want to think about being a little creative with the end of June. So, I guess stand by for that. Future agenda items, anything that folks want to suggest?
I would just ask again for the town department reports to us?
Yes, so I think we're going to have, so DPW will come in. I think we're going to start doing that on a rotating basis. And then, I would also encourage everyone on committees, which I know we all are on committees, to begin letting the, Mr. Milano know once you've met, so that you can report back at this meeting, so we can hear from the finance committee or from Affordable Housing Trust or, or the landing, whenever you have a meeting, you know, even if it's just a, we had a meeting and nothing happened, I think it's good to, to keep us aware of that. Any other future agenda items? Okay. Are we moving into exec?
Yes, if we could, should be quick.
Okay. So, I would like to move to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Milton Clerical Unit of the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Milton Professional Management Association, Milton Public Employee Association, Milton Firefighters Local 1116, Milton Police Association, Milton Superior Officers, Milton Library Association. Based on my belief, the discussions of these matters in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the select board. The select board will not return to open session.
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Daley? Ms. Hegarty?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Do we need the second one too?
Yes.
Okay. So, then I'm going to move to adjourn from the open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect, to threaten litigation, that one?
We might have pulled that one off. We might have pulled that one off. Sorry.
Okay.
I didn't catch that. To conduct negotiations...
To conduct negotiations, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator. Based on my belief, the discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the Select Board. The Select Board will not return to open session.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells. Again, a roll call vote. Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are, can I, so then we are adjourned, right?
Yep.
Thank you very much.